Good evening, everyone. We are here at the Board of Education regular meeting on Thursday, August 16th, at the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. We will begin with a silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I will yield to Dr. Ruffin for a moment of silence. I believe she has something to read.
In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember our former employees of the Waterbury Public Schools who have passed away. Dorothy Lacour was a teacher at Tinker for 35 years. Josephine Fode, Italian and Latin teacher at Crosby for 40 years. Patricia Lucas, teacher at Chase School for 40 years. Phyllis Steele, teacher at Bunker Hill School, 27 years. Amy Davis, school secretary at various schools for 17 years. Deanna Pond, head food service cook at Crosby, more than 30 years. Let us remember them and recognize their service and dedication to the students of Waterbury this evening.
Thank you, and also I'd like to include we had an employee take ill this morning. Please keep her in your prayers. Thank you. Moment of silence. Okay, everyone, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wab, Vice President Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Pagano.
Present.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno, Commissioner Stango.
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone.
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Present.
President Brown.
I love my room.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We will begin with communications. I will need a motion to receive and place on file communications as posted on the agenda.
Motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, I will also entertain a motion to approve, thank you, to approve the meeting minutes as posted on the agenda.
Motion to approve the minutes is listed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion has it. Motion to approve. Okay, do we have anyone wishing to address? No, we don't. All right, is there anyone that wishes to address the board at this time? Going once, going twice? Thank you very much. Okay, so we will have the superintendent. We will have the superintendent announcements. Dr. Ruffin.
I believe all members of the board have received the announcements for this evening, but I did want to take an opportunity to say thank you and how excited I am to, one day soon, meet all of our principals as well as our teachers in the district. Our first day of school is vastly approaching. Our principals have reported to work on August 14th. They have been in professional development, but I have not had an opportunity to meet them collectively, and I look forward to that very soon. Our very first day of school for our students is August 27th, which is fast approaching. We're looking forward to meeting and greeting our staff, our students, our families, and our community in Waterbury Public Schools. We are discussing what graduates should know, and we'll be involving the community as well as all of our schools and our staff in creating what we will call a profile for the graduate in Waterbury Public Schools, and it will involve an entire community approach to identifying what students need to learn and be able to do in our district. I will also incorporate that as part of my community forums when I'm out publicly meeting with everyone, but I do want to wish everyone a successful school start and welcome our students on August 27th, which is in a few days. Next week, we will also have professional development for our teachers who will be returning to work on August 21st and 22nd, and I look forward to visiting and having an opportunity to informally meet all of them as well. Our professional development for teachers will be held on August 23rd and 24th respectively. We are also excited about our back-to-school rally, which will be on August 22nd from noon to 3:00 p.m. This is also a well-attended opportunity for families to be able to come in and receive information about our schools and communities, and for all of us to extend our warm welcome to all of our families, including those that are new to Waterbury. Our special education department is hosting a middle school transition information meeting for parents of students that will be going from fifth to sixth grade on Wednesday, August 22nd, and that will be on our website. I ask that people really follow us as we continue to update our website. The meeting on August 22nd will be at 5:30. It will be in the Chase Building, and this training, again, is for our special education students and families who are transitioning from fifth grade to sixth grade this year. Our first holiday, we're talking about school starting on August 27th, and we're talking about our first holiday, which is going to be on September 3rd to celebrate our Labor Day, and there will be no school on that day. Our annual report to the city has been completed and submitted to Mayor Neil O'Leary. It is now posted on our district website. Invite everyone to look at that report as we will continue to post our goals and our accomplishments, and I look forward to being here a full year with you so that we can continue to post our announcements for next year. And that's my announcements for this evening at this time.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. All right, so President's comments. Like everyone to know that we will have a meet and greet for Dr. Ruffin on Friday, August 24th, in the Veterans Hall that's located on the second floor of Town Hall from 3:00 to 5:00. So we again invite the public to come out and to meet our new superintendent, Dr. Ruffin, on August 24th from 3:00 to 5:00 in the Veterans Hall, which is located on the second floor of Town Hall. Okay, so with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. Vice President, please remove 9.6 from the consent calendar.
All right, 9.6. Okay, does anyone have anything else to remove? Okay. You have to read the consent calendar. Okay. All right, so the consent calendar, 9.1, Committee of the Whole, request approval of a college facility, request reservation agreement with Nogatuck Valley Community College. 9.2, Committee of the Whole, reappointment of Nancy Vaughn as the Department of Education's representative to the Greater Waterbury Cable Council. 9.3, Committee of the Whole, request approval of revisions of the 2018-19 school year calendar. Committee of the Whole, request approval of agreement with Springfield College for social work internship. Item 9.5, Committee on Finance, request approval of a professional services agreement with AAA Nursing Care LLC to provide nursing services. 9.7, Committee on Finance, request approval of an agreement with Joseph Calazo doing business as Abbey Vending to provide messenger and courier services. 9.8, Committee on Policy, request approval of revisions to the high school graduation exit criteria policy, number 6146. Item 9.9, Committee on Legislation, request approval of a resolution proposal to CADE regarding state grant process and timeliness. 9.10, Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, use of school facilities and grounds by school organizations and/or city departments. 9.11, Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. Need a motion to approve consent calendar as read.
Motion to approve the consent calendar, items 9.1 through 9.5 and 9.7 through 9.11.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Okay, so Committee on Finance, item 9.5.
The Committee on Finance recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approve a professional services agreement with Constellation School-Based Therapy LLC for a three-year period to provide registered behavioral technician services for students with disabilities.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I remove this although I will vote affirmative. We went through this in detail a few months back. Much of the conversation had to do with attendance, which I debated. We have very good professionals in this profession that are employed by the City of Waterbury. I do not want to see them leave our employment. I understand to backfill in, we need to have a Plan B. This is a very special group of employees. I am 100% behind them, and I understand what we are doing here, so I will vote in favor of it, but this group of employees are very special to this district, and we really should back them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Commissioner Jason Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The only thing I would add to that is the population that these professionals serve is paramount, and I believe that this contract will help to ensure that they receive, every day, every school day, the care and treatment and guidance that they deserve. So while I'm glad that somewhat a middle road was found, I believe that it's our job, it's incumbent on us to make the decision that, at least in my opinion, benefits the student first. So I'm glad we are going to go with this agreement because I believe that is at the heart of this issue, and I think this will help go a long way to ensure that. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. All right, moving on to item number 11, Committee on Policy. Commissioner Sweeney.
Item 11.1, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve of revisions to the bylaws of the Board, number 9010, under standing committees, the addition of the following. The Board will allow electronic participation of members of standing committees and ad hoc committees in accordance with Board Policy Number 9005, electronic participation.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 11.2, Commissioner Sweeney.
Item 11.2, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve of the new policy entitled Electronic Participation, number 9005, as attached.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Okay, we will go into executive session.
Motion to convene and to executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Everyone in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, we will go into executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, we will be back as soon as possible. Hang in there with us. Thank you. We're going back. We will be in the back there. Congratulations.
Check it and turn it off.
Check it just to make sure. It might be on though.
Motion to return to the regular order of business from executive session. No votes were taken.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Okay, so we will resume Committee on School Personnel. Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Committee on School Personnel, item 13.1, regarding Tinker School Principal Appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of Maria Jimenez as principal of Tinker School effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Dr. Ruffin.
Ms. Jimenez.
Yes, go first. We have to do a vote. Yeah. Okay, roll call, please.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Pagano?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
Motion passes. We can clap.
Ms. Jimenez, it's an honor and a privilege to appoint you as principal of Tinker, and I'd like for you to say a few words and also introduce your family that's here with you this evening and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ruffin. I thank you for the opportunity of appointing me. I am honored to continue to be part of the Waterbury family. I started here in 2004. I've been 14 years, first as an educator, a facilitator, and now an administrator, and I am very excited to begin that new role at Tinker and to continue the great work that we started. So thank you for this opportunity. I have my husband. I also would like to thank my family, who has been by my side and sacrificed many weekends and nights. My husband, Dennis. My daughter, Jessica. She's also a teacher here at Waterbury and Waterbury. I also would like to thank Mr. Schwartz, who has always helped me throughout my career as a mentor and helped me professionally continue to grow in the Waterbury district. I would like to thank Mrs. Buckley, who has supported me and pushed me forward to continue to pursue and do things here in Waterbury. So, Mrs. Buckley, I would also like to thank Mr. Brinker, because Mr. Brinker, on one occasion, we had a discussion, and I said, "I want to be an administrator." He says, "But you have no experience." And I said, "Well, Mr. Brinker, you have to give me some experience." And he made that possible. I was interim vice principal at Holville and at, oh my God, I forgot the other school, too many places. But I thank him for the opportunity, and I thank all of you again for appointing me. I'm very excited and look forward to continuing my work here in Waterbury.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. A long, lonely walk to town.
All right, let's give her a hand again. All right, Commissioner Stango, item 13.2, please.
Item 13.2, regarding the lateral transfer request. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the approval of the lateral transfer request of Maureen Bergen from early childhood special education supervisor to supervisor of the Office of Early Childhood Education, and that would be effective August 23rd, 2018, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, item 13.3, please.
13.3, regarding the transfer to supervising vice principal. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the approval of the lateral transfer request of Kelly Peehall from supervising vice principal of Wilson School to the supervising vice principal of Dreg School, effective August 2nd, 2018, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, item 13.4, please.
13.4, regarding the specs for the position of Assistant Deputy Superintendent of Schools. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on School Personnel recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the job specifications for the position of the Assistant Deputy Superintendent of Schools as attached.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Discussion. Commissioner Tom Vanstone, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This change of description, but finally having a job description, is a good thing for me. Unfortunately, we are saying goodbye to an ILD who has served this community extremely well. Dr. Paul White, I thank you so much, what you have done for us, and as I told you walking in, New Haven's gain is our loss, but our communication said, "We are here to do the best for all students," and we agreed on that. As you know, you will always be special to me. I thank you for your service. I wish you Godspeed, and we are better for your service to this community. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Paul White.
All right, any further discussion?
I have more.
Any further discussion?
I have additional, if you would.
13.4?
Yes, additional on that. And that leaves us with two. Two ILDs that also have served this community well. I know we need to go through the process. We'll be looked at by saying, "If, if," those two individuals move into these positions, we'll be scrutinized, but we'll be better if it does remain status quo. However, one of the things I did bring up, now that we're down to two, is the opportunity for the third position, being Alliance money, to be utilized differently. I was somewhat, not to my surprise, misquoted in the newspaper to think that one of these positions should serve bilingual and STEM. Actually, what I was looking for was that third position, money, to bring us more bilingual and STEM teachers. I've always been a proponent of only two ILDs, and now with this new position, I think we have the right to people that we should move forward with two and utilize the Alliance money, as I proposed. I don't know if we'll go there, but that is how I feel. So we're moving in the right direction to allow Dr. Ruffin to establish the folks around her to move us forward. So those are my opinions on this. I will vote for the job description. I just hope filling them goes a little different. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Okay, item 14, Superintendent's notification to the Board. I need a motion to receive and place on file.
Motion to receive and place on file, Superintendent's notification to the Board, items 14.1 through 14.6.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? No, discussion. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to item number 15, unfinished business, a proceeding meeting only. If no business, item 16, unfinished business, new and miscellaneous. Okay, no new business. We already had executive session, so I will move on to, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, okay, motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, commissioners.
We know our roles. We know our roles.